Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegacounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem, just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to room 302 or the fourth floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Seeing Gerald in the chamber, we'll go ahead and go to Robert Gorman.
Ready? Headline, Jim Desmond requests U.S. Attorney's Office to investigate. I thought, great, the captain is finally stepping up to protect his flight crew and passengers. Finally, after 11 deaths and numerous crashes, the captain, with all his expertise and time in aviation, has had enough deaths. Next page, nope. Supervisor Desmond is playing a labor attorney, sticking up for an at-will employee, not sticking up for the pilots and passengers that have died in the last five years on our streets, not even sticking up for a fellow commercial airline pilot who lived in his own district, Carlsbad. Jim sat as chairperson on the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority, which concocted this horrible business plan for our airport system modeled after Minneapolis-St. Paul. It's called the MAC. Supervisor Desmond, this is not Minnesota, and even thinking that this plan would work is incompetent. Because of you, the expert, San Diego's airport system is toxic, outdated, and simply put, a killer. The dead bodies strewn over our neighborhoods prove it. This was your career, but you put politics before your fellow pilots, crews, and passengers' safety. We are demanding a grand jury investigation with other county and state organizations to fix what you want. Man up, Captain Desmond, ask for a grand jury investigation, along with the Board of Supervisors, before more innocent people die. I mean, the data is there. We have the worst accident history or accident ratio in the U.S., and we have all these airports, and none of them are worth a crap. If all these people would have been allowed to land at a 12,000-foot runway at Miramar, they would all be alive. Thank you.
Be careful, right, Monica? I just want to be clear. Malaika and Zaya here. The Robinson girls will not be adopted out. They will not be forced vaccinated. You guys have known what's been going on. In fact, Monica, your staff had gone out to talk to the mother, who is here, Evelyn Lopez, and you did nothing. You had Mariah do nothing but say that she needs to just listen to the agency. So I am giving you guys two documents. One is a revocation of interest and conditional acceptance, that after 24 hours, if you do not return the girls, you will continue to be charged $1 million a day per child, per day, until you return them. The other one is regarding the forced vaccination. It is the mother's statement that she does not want the children to be vaccinated. So if the girls get vaccinated as well, every, each girl will cost you guys $1 million each if this happens. This is not a joke anymore. You guys are kidnapping children. In fact, yesterday, it was so egregious that families, parents that came in to talk about their children being kidnapped were actually kicked out of the meeting. So you guys are getting a little bit more aggressive in your ploy to silence the truth, especially by telling people to be careful, Monica. So you guys should probably be careful when you continue to traffic children and put yourselves in danger for, you know, crimes against humanity, crimes against children, deprivation of rights under the color of law. These are federal issues. You guys already have federal investigations happening. The federal government is watching you. The federal government knows about this case. So I would ask you to course correct from this point forward, and if you don't, looks like you will be paying a pretty penny.
Now, we will hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. And again, in accordance with the board rules, we will hear from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hi, good morning. My name is Madison, and I work in the field of youth drug prevention and community health. I'm here today to share some public health considerations related to commercial cannabis cultivation in unincorporated areas of the county. As land use decisions move forward, I encourage us to take into account how environmental planning intersects with youth health and safety. Unincorporated areas are home to many families, schools, and youth-serving organizations. And what we allow in these spaces has a direct impact on community norms and risk factors for young people. Research from the National Survey on Drug Use and Health shows a 74% increase in cannabis use disorder among youth ages 12 to 17 over the last decade. We also know that the closer youth live to visible and normalized cannabis activity, whether retail or cultivation, the greater the perception that it's safe or risk-free. The county should be thoughtful about where these activities are permitted and how they are buffered from youth spaces, and to include prevention specialists and public health voices in ongoing planning. Ultimately, it would be best if these cannabis operations were not taking part in our unincorporated areas. We should be focusing on long-term community health, especially for our young people growing up in this area. Thank you for your time and commitment to protecting the well-being of all San Diego County residents.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning, board members. My name's Megan Stewart. I'm here today with a background in social work and experience working directly with youth. I would like to encourage you to carefully consider the unintended consequences of actions such as permitting marijuana businesses, allowing marijuana promotion through events, including special events, or failing to adopt strong smoke-free policies. The Government Accountability Office recently released a report to Congress highlighting that young people are bombarded with mixed and contradictory messages about marijuana. On one hand, we are telling them that substance use is risky, that it can derail their health, education, and relationships. But on the other hand, as cities and counties issue commercial permits or allow marijuana to be promoted in public spaces, the message they hear is, this is safe, this is normal, and this is acceptable. As someone who has dealt with teenagers struggling through school suspensions, fractured family trust, and declining mental health usually connected to marijuana use, I can tell you firsthand that children and youth are paying attention to the messages we send. They are not just watching PSAs put out by public health agencies, they're also watching us. The GAO report made it clear that when prevention messages are undermined by environmental factors like marijuana permitting and commercialization, the campaigns lose their effectiveness. Teens are not acknowledging risks because the environment around them is telling them that it's no big deal. Permitting marijuana businesses, setting smoke-free protections aside, or turning a blind eye at marijuana public events is not neutral, and it is setting the tone for our youth and young adults by directly undercutting the prevention work being done in our schools, by parents, and by community organizations. By rejecting policies that would expand or promote marijuana access, we are sending a clear, consistent, and truly protective message to the next generation. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello, you can hear me? Hi. Hi, my name's David, and last name is Stack, and I live in Fallbrook, California. And this is regarding the county supervisors and North County Fire, uh, North County Fire. Fallbrook used to be known for agriculture, but between the high cost of water and the developers, it's become overpopulated. Now you guys, the Board of Supervisors, uh, what I'm basically getting at is Fallbrook is so congested, and nobody can get in and out of Fallbrook anymore. There's no on-off ramps, it's bumper-to-bumper. It's because of out-of-control development. Here's the thing. I pay taxes like everybody else, and now between you guys, the county Board of Supervisors, and North County Fire Department, they want to sell that land to Zeke Weaver Memorial Baseball Field. You guys sell that, and it becomes low-income apartments. Guess what? The Little League have no place to play baseball anymore. They can't use the other fields because they're already being used. Stealing from Paul to pay Peter is not a good thing, okay? The other thing is, you put, you guys put these, uh, low-income apartments there, uh, it destroys the Boys and Girls Club, too. If you guys put low-income apartments on the, it's over 100-year-old baseball field, it's destroying the community, and the more traffic and more noise. Here's another thing. You guys put these low-income apartments on this baseball field, uh, do you guys realize that the fire department uses that to land their helicopter?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Raff, and today I'd like to raise a serious concern about traffic safety as it relates to the proposed expansion of marijuana businesses in the back country. I appreciate that updated traffic data is constantly being collected, but I'm concerned that the draft EIR failed to fully address how impaired driving, particularly with emerging marijuana trends, will impact our rural roadways. A recent article reported that 1 in 3 millennials and then the workers now choose marijuana-infused beverages over alcohol at after-work gatherings, sometimes used alone and sometimes mixed with alcohol. This matters for San Diego because impaired driving risks are no longer limited to alcohol alone. Adding marijuana storefronts in remote areas where long rural commutes and limited law enforcement already pose challenges will only heighten these risks. Traffic safety should be of the utmost priority. Every crash statistic represents a neighbor, a family member, or a child on their way to school or work. We know that impairment, whether from alcohol, marijuana, or other substances, turns an ordinary trip into a tragedy. The marijuana draft EIR should have taken these risks into account far more thoroughly. Supervisors, traffic safety is public safety. Expanding marijuana access in areas already difficult to patrol is not only bad planning, it's a preventable danger. And I urge you to hold the line and insist that traffic safety, marijuana impaired driving, and the unique risks of rural roads be fully considered. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello, good morning, Marcos Manoza. I just wanted to say congratulations to the newly-elected supervisor. I didn't call in yesterday. And even though it's still August, considering that session has started again, it's nice to be back from the August recess. And that's all. Thank you very much. I go back to the chair.
All right. Thank you. And Vice Chair Montgomery stepped. That concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Let's go on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of statement of proceedings for the County of San Diego Flood Control District Meeting of June 24, 2025, and June 25, 2025. The sanitation district meetings of June 24, 2025, and June 25, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Yeah, I'll take that as a motion by Supervisor Anderson and a second by Chairpro Tim McGarry. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Montgomery stepped. That motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present in voting.
Thank you so much. We will now proceed to the formation of the consent agenda, that is, items 1 through 8, sanitation district item 1, and flood control district item 1 for today's meeting. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items that they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have any comments on the items on the consent agenda? Let's go to Chairpro Tim McGarry. Do you have anything, any comments or?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Anderson.
You know what? I, uh, I, we did, when we did the flood control district, may we take another vote on that? I messed up. I ignored my notes. For agenda item number 1 on the flood district agenda, to summarize the vacant, to vacate a drain easement, I received a contribution of more than $250 in 2024 from Tony Shores, who is a party to the, who's the party's agent. Therefore, I must recuse myself from participating in the discussion or decision. And in fact, I made the motion, which was totally incorrect.
Okay.
So can we revisit that? Because I apologize, I should have said something sooner.
Actually, that was the minutes that she did make the motion on, I believe.
That is correct, Vice Chair. That was just the minutes.
Not the consent agenda, which is where we are now.
Okay. So everything I said applies now.
Okay. Okay. So I'm looking to county council and our county clerk for advice on this, but what I would say is, we go ahead and pull the flood control district item, or we can vote and have the record reflect the recusal of that item, which, do we need to pull it and have a clean?
Yeah, I had a clarifying question through the vice chair. Supervisor, are you saying that the item that was in the minutes or the item that's on the agenda today is the item that you want to recuse from?
It's in the flood control district item 1.
Okay, it's for today's item.
Yes.
Then in that case, what I would say is, you can simply recuse yourself from voting on that item, and we can move forward.
Okay, we don't need to pull. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair. Yes, we should pull that item and act on it separately.
Separately, correct. Okay. Okay. Then let's do that. Let's pull flood control district item number 1, and then have the balance of the consent agenda. And so I will go to Supervisor Desmond. Do you have any comments or any, any other items?
No, nothing to pull, no comments to make. And I'll make a recommendation to approve, I guess, the agenda, the consent agenda, items 2 through 8.
Well, there will be items 1 through 8, and then sanitation district item 1, because we're pulling flood control.
That's fine.
All right, all right. I got you. I hear you. Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments real quick on item number 2, and I want to congratulate staff on all your hard work to receive this grant. I think that the, addressing the first and last mile connections is very, very important, especially in our region, which has the hilly topography, and in order to increase transit use, that first and mile, first and last mile connection is extremely important. I've also seen a number of micro-transit programs happening through Sandag that have neighborhood shuttles operated by community-based organizations. So it's good to see all of this and how this grant plays into that. And with that, I will second the motion, and then we'll move on to public comment.
Just a point for clarification.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Anderson, yes.
When we get to the flood item, I'm to leave the room for discussion, the rest. So I just want to make sure that I'm doing everything correctly. This is, well, now the chair's here, so I'm sure I'm going to do everything correctly.
Yeah. At this time, I will, um, well, okay, I was going to say, because then I have to explain where you are. Okay. So yes, if I, we are not voting on the item that we have pulled, which is the flood control district item number 1, because that is the item you will need to recuse yourself from. And so you can vote on this, and then, once we get done with public comment, then you can leave, and then we can vote. Okay. All right. So we will now turn to public comment. As a reminder, for the speakers, your comments must be related to those items only on the consent agenda. At this time, it concludes my service. Ryan, please call the speakers, and we'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery stepped. And this is for items 1 through 8 and sanitation item 1. As noted, flood control district item 1 was pulled, and we will hear that at a later time. Thank you again. We do have 12 total requests to speak on the consent agenda, six individuals in person, six requesting to speak by phone. Again, item, the flood control district item 1 was pulled from the consent agenda, so any individuals that requested to speak on that item, please just hold your comments until we get to the discussion. We will receive that public comment on that item separately. For the phone callers, please call into the, for any individuals that requested to speak on the remaining of the items on consent agenda, please, by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called forward, please come stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. You'll have 2 minutes to address the board. If you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Caesar Javier, and Darren Miller.
Tara, welcome. Welcome to the day. Were you having some coffee? You missed out. Just wanted you to know you have some paperwork sitting there for you about the girls you guys kidnapped. So keep that in mind, you might want to read it. You owe some, quite a lot of money if you don't return the girls and if they get vaccinated. So I highly suggest you course correct. Anywho, yes, I'm wondering, did you guys grow up wanting to like control things? Were you like, I want to sit on a dais, and I want to tell people what to do, tell them to shut up, have them arrested, spend all the money, and really just kind of put them in a 15-minute city? But Tara, you're a Soros puppet, so you're doing a very good job. He's proud of you, Monica as well. But yeah, because it's like, you want to, you know, change people's behaviors with your whole first and last mile stuff. We want to get people to ride public transit more, right? Because we need them to walk and bike and take public transit. We cannot have them driving. It's going to murder the earth, right? I mean, could you imagine if the earth wasn't here because we're driving? Oh, my gosh. But imagine all those children that you guys take. Look at that. It's like you care more about the earth than you do about children. And then you're talking about like pepper spray and stuff yesterday. You know there's rapes going on and murders in these detention facilities, but pepper spray is a good one to go after, Monica, as long as it looks like you're doing something. People are really going to think you care, right? They do. They're just deceived, and that's what's so sad. Because you tell people to be careful, and it's like, God is telling you to be careful because you're walking down a very narrow path that leads to a very dark place when you guys kidnap and abuse children.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Caesar or Darren Miller?
Caesar and Purita, taxpayers, senior with existing medical condition. We have a say on this consent agenda. Eight items. We have been in this country, my country, my homeland, and goddamn, for God's sake, we elected you to give your best of your 10 intelligences, your moral dimensions. My attention, our attention was caught by that SEQA exemption. SEQA is an implementing guidelines of the Constitution. Domestic tranquility, public welfare, ensure justice. Mama McGarry, I didn't vote for you, but I voted for Supervisor Monica. It was a mistake. This is our community, similar to San Jacinto, similar to any geography in our county. Now you're trying to discuss and approve by weightlifting the vision. Yes, no, that is not intelligence. I must remind you that SEQA meant decent home, suitable surroundings. What is happening to our community? District 9, neighbor of District 4, formerly led by Monica, which is fuck like something.
Sir, sir, thank you. Your time is up. Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Darren Miller, and then I'll call the next two speakers, Ed Kurzell and Mike, I believe it's Reardon. My apologies if I mispronounce that.
And I am with Midair Aviation. I am here today speaking on item number 6. On behalf of our entire team, I want to extend our deepest gratitude for the county staff that has shown a great deal of dedication, ingenuity, and flexibility in bringing this new 50-year lease to the board for your approval. Without Marali, Jamie, Ursula, Carmella, and Maria, this never would have happened, and we are so thankful for their support and hard work over the last several years. I am here today to request your approval of this new 50-year aviation lease. This decision is not just about the long-term future of our operations. It's a commitment ship, it's a commitment to partnership, growth, and the continued success of our community. Without your, with your support of this lease, we are now positioned to move forward with significant capital improvements to our facilities, as this lease will allow us to obtain the financing we need to make these improvements. These upgrades will modernize our operations, ensure safety and efficiency, and allow us to better serve both our aviation partners and the surrounding community. In addition to capital improvements, we plan to make sustainability improvements that will reduce our environmental footprint and ensure that the airport continues to be a responsible steward of our shared resources. We plan to install solar, replace outdated HVAC equipment, install new LED lights, and replace our current landscape with drought-tolerant plants and ground cover. From greener technologies to more efficient practices, this lease enables us to plan and deliver a more sustainable vision for decades to come. This lease also represents a direct benefit to the community. We will create new jobs, strengthen existing career pathways, and contribute to a more skilled and resilient workforce. Additionally, a new lease with significant, significant capital improvements will increase our property taxes that will further support schools, infrastructure, and essential services throughout our region. 50 years is a remarkable horizon. With this approval, you will provide stability and confidence that will allow us to invest, innovate, and contribute meaningfully for generations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ed Kurzell, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the San Diego County Airport Lessies Association this morning. We are in favor of the board approving agenda items 4, 5, and 6. San Diego County is very fortunate to have one of the very few systems of airports that are self-sustaining in the United States. They require no contribution from the general fund for their operation. These airports are often taken for granted, but directly contribute hundreds of millions of dollars a year to the local economy through jobs, taxes, and access to the community. They also contribute basis of operation for law enforcement, disaster relief, and emergency services. All the development beyond infrastructure, which is 90% federal funds, has been invested by private enterprise. The county is tasked with stewardship of the land. We have created with county staff a public-private partnership that will go a long way in modernizing the county's airport system and ensuring its viability and environmental sustainability into the future. I'd like to make a very special thank you to the staff that believed in this vision and worked to make it a reality. This has been nearly 2 years of concentrated effort. County Board of Supervisor Joel Anderson, Andrew Hayes on Mr. Anderson's staff, DCAO Davia Lynch, Department of Public Works. Davia Lynch, Department of Public Works Marissa Berry, Department of Public Works Marali Passamart, I knew I was going to mess this up, Passamartie, Director of Airports Jamie Abbott and his staff. Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you. And as our next speaker is coming up, I'll call the final in-person speaker, Robert Gurman.
Well, good morning. My name is Mike Reardon. I'm with Sky Vision X and I don't know how I'm going to outdo those two. They were pretty good. But I'll just say I'm a local guy, grew up in our community, and I believe in our airports and I put together a good plan that'll allow that leasehold to be self-sustaining with the help of your county staff to come up with a good plan. I'm hoping that you will vote yes for it and we're going to do our best to make it a great place.
Robert Gurman. Please read my ecomments on four, five, and six. I figured that would be easier than itemizing these. There is no reason to change any terms and conditions on these leases. Airport's been there for 80 years. If they can't make it by now, they ain't going to make it and they are not making it. That's why they're here. That's why they're here is because they're going broke, but the public just doesn't know it. They know it, but that's why they're down here pleading for that 50-year lease. The reason Gillespie's leaseholders are here is because Gillespie Field and County Airports, without the airports, the county guys don't work, yeah, is scared to death of California's redistricting plan. If the redistricting plan is approved, Gillespie could lose their politicians that rubber-stamped their unsafe, toxic, inept, unsafe airport system. As you can tell, I didn't prepare anything because, but I'm still so upset that I'm having a rough time even remembering my name. But I'll tell you, Gillespie is, is a liability to the people of East County, not an asset. It is an island in the middle of our valley that we have to drive around. We, first responders can't go through it, the public can't go through it, and they want to expand it for a commercial airport. That's what this is all about. They want to expand an airport in a hole for a commercial airport on a 5300-foot runway with EMS, emergency material systems at each end, that they have to renew every 10 years for $25 million. Where's our tax money? They take money for their roads, Wing Street Avenue improvement.
Thank you. We'll now go to our, we will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller. Consuelo, you are our first caller. You may be muted.
Okay, we're on consent, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and is it one minute or two?
Consent is two minutes.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I just wanted to remind everyone that the items on today's consent calendar are not random, whether it's from MTS, aviation, land use, or so-called equity programs. Every single one of them is in lockstep with the United Nations Agenda for the 21st Century. This is not local governance. This is global compliance. The UN's blueprint calls for complete restructuring of transportation, food, health, housing, and land use. And what you see here today are the pieces quietly put into place. What does this mean for us? It means the county is being prepped for the era of fishbowl living, constant surveillance, digital IDs, controlled movement, and restrictions on every human choice. It means families will be managed as assets, not served as people. It means freedom traded for monitoring and sovereignty, and sovereignty traded for control. They sell us sustainability and equity and safety, but, but let's be clear, this isn't about protecting the vulnerable or saving, or saving the planet. If that were true, we would see toxic food pushed on, we wouldn't see toxic food pushed on the poor or corporations profiting from endless cycles of illness and scarcity. This is about obedience. This is about creating a population that is tracked, controlled, and compliant. And they're trying to do this all by 2030 and have it done by 2050. So I say to the public, get ready. What you once dismissed as conspiracy theory is now policy. What the so-called conspiracy theorists tried to war.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hey Tara, I want an apology for the statement about my comment because you were completely wrong. It had to do with the fact that you said you were going to go ahead and look into registration voter fraud and the response that your team had was have the county file a restraining order and then you hide behind it. Isn't that correct? Oh, don't worry, I'm not going to be calling you guys anymore. I'm expecting you guys to be calling me. I want an apology, 100%. I had to bring light to this. I know that there's different ways to go ahead and do this and I do apologize, Monica.
Excuse me, please pause this time. We are on consent agenda, so please ensure that your comments are relevant to the items on the consent agenda. If your items are not, if your comments are not topical, you will forfeit your time.
You can begin your comments.
They are. Oh, absolutely. It's about the elections. The elections that got you guys elected, that you, you, why, the reason why you answer to say they're not the people.
You can go ahead and in his time, there's no election-related topic on the consent items. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Rimmer. And with that, that concludes public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Did, Super Governor Anderson, do we have a conversation or discussion about any consent agenda before I came?
I don't think anyone else had any further comments, so.
Okay. Did any of my colleagues have any other thoughts, they'd like to share any comments on the consent items? Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp. Please vote.
This is items one through eight in sanitation, item one.
Excluding flood.
And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So I know Supervisor Anderson had to recuse himself, so now we will move on to flood control district item one for today's meeting. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions on this item? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Vice Chair Montgomery-Stapp. Please turn to public comments.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have six total requests to speak, two individuals in person, and four requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments on this item. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers and I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier. You'll have two minutes to address the board and if you could please begin by state, stating your name for the audio record.
Two minutes for this and then yesterday you put two items together, sexual assault and helping veterans. Wow. And then we get two minutes to talk on this. Cool, I get two minutes to bug the shit out of you guys. Yeah, it's interesting because anything you guys want to do that has to do with flooding, I would say no, because you cannot be trusted to do anything, because you let people basically suffer, because you refuse to not only acknowledge things that have to do with the flooding, like cloud seeding, or like that doesn't have anything to do with it. It doesn't. We're not going to acknowledge that because that would go against our climate action plan. If we admitted that there is actually weather manipulation, Jim, remember, those are not contrails, they're chemtrails. Some of them are contrails, Jim. But I mean honestly, as a pilot, I know pilots and they like actually know about it. So I don't know if you haven't been up in the air lately, maybe you haven't seen or just looked up, but maybe because they're putting it in cartoons now, right? As long as they get to the children and manipulate their mind to make them think anytime they look up, that's just a cloud. That's so cool, right? So as long as we deceive the people, it's good. So as long as we take money and we put it somewhere else and we don't do anything for, you know, to make sure we're keeping up with flooding, then people come and lose everything and then they got to come to you and you get to do more control. Do you guys like that? Is it cool when people come and ask you for help? Like, is that what you enjoy? Like people grovelling and being like, please help me? And you're just like, oh, I'm like holding the, you know, carrot. Do we want to help them? Do we not? I don't know how I feel today. I'm constipated, you know, like, maybe it'll help you release? I don't know. I see that smile, Tara. You know, it's funny, because what you guys do is terroristic.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Cesar and Purita, senior with existing medical condition. You know, this is a subject on urban planning, which is a governance. You see, vacating an instrument because it's a CEQA finding, probably exempted, is something that is a big question mark. You know, treatment plants or storm water go through cleansing, cleaning, or even if the water is used for pure water, like the project of the city of San Diego, it needs some conveyance, you know, from, from high elevation to lower, down to the ocean, that's where it flows. Now, what does it mean if you vacate that? Meaning eliminate that portion which is supposed to be maintained, which is supposed to be taken care of? That is our shell. That's part of rural urban planning in the context of that sphere. What are we doing? We should improve that. Eliminating that responsibility to take care of it is wrong. I asked Mr. Lacaba, my fellow citizen, who is now the council president, what do you mean by vacate, sir? And he said, oh, that's simple, eliminate, meaning you eliminate the responsibility to take care of that, conveyance of our precious water? My God, let's wake up. CEO, you are qualified because of your classified capability. You might have past disabled service. You have to pour your intelligence and convince them to protect it.
Thank you. Your time's up. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and then you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
I could take this in two different directions, but I'm going to have fun right now. Flooding, let's go to talk about flooding. You want to go ahead and handle this? This is a perfect example, our elections are on satire and all that stuff, because when the people's houses got flooded, what is this, what, what did the city of San Diego do? Decided to flew 11 people based off of the flooding because they just cleaned out the river. Isn't that correct? I do believe that is currently happening right now. That is a perfect example why Tara doesn't want to answer that question. She knows the answer. She did the research. She looked into it and her response was shut down the people. There is no question about that. So do you want to correct yourself again? Because it is clear that you don't work for us, that you work for the stakeholders that stole our, stole our votes and you're covering for us. You directly are covering for them. That's a fact. Unless you could go ahead and show me the evidence that you did the research instead of trying to silence me. Yeah, I turned the tables very quickly, didn't I? I know what you guys were up to. I just had to wait for my time. Payback the bitch.
All right. Thank you. And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We are, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp on flood control district item number one, General Services. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with Supervisor Anderson recusing himself, all their supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We can now move on to item number nine. Okay, I was going to ask someone to go get you, but you're ready. Okay, thank you. This is discussion item nine, Traffic Advisory Committee and Related CEQA Findings. We will begin with public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have eight total requests to speak on item nine, two individuals in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Do want to note for the record, we received one ecomment, which was neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. Like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier. Again, you will have two minutes to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
Don't forget, you know, the kidnapped children. You got to keep your eye on them. Show it in your face, right? Because you guys don't want to even say their name, right? Malaya Kenzai, just in case you, you know, I don't know, whatever. Anywho, so yes, Traffic Advisory Committee. So interesting to see you guys lowering the speed limit so low that we'll be walking soon. I don't know why we don't just do that, you know, and then charge just to walk and breathe because that's going to really help the planet if we breathe less and stuff like that. I'm wondering who we're saving the planet for when we're like destroying children and like, you know, having them raped and different things, murdered by, you know, staff that you guys hire, you know, whatever. Who is, who's the future for? Like who do we, who is it that we're doing this for? Is it people that drink adrenochrome or something and take young blood from children that will be here? I don't know. Elvira, do you do that? Maybe? Who knows? Anywho, yes, what else? It is definitely about obedience. So I'm wondering, is this part of your anticipated behavioral health needs and will you be medicating people when they don't want to get out of their car? Are you going to put them in like, are we going to open up some new facilities or are we going to use FEMA camps to really lock the people up? Right? You guys are so good at not paying attention. It's cool, I could talk about anything, you know? How about the AI and Palantir? When's that coming in? It's already been in, you know, Lafayette, I mean, yeah, no, whatever, for a long time, like 10 years. So it'll be interesting when we have to have biometrics just to come in here. It's going to prove that you guys are demons because you won't pass, right? All right. This has been fun.
Thank you. Next speaker. Your time's up. Thank you.
Is my time up? Thank you, Ryan.
Next speaker, please.
Cesar and Purita, taxpayers. Try to think of it, CEO. Now I found your title, man. I asked you about land use and it's impacting our community. Analogy to traffic advisory. I am now your advisor. I volunteered in many advisory committee in the county, aging independence, community action, partnership, health and human resource and professional, you know? We are even attending this disaster committee there and we found out that, my God, we have logical workforces in the county to resolve anything about planning our urban setting, from rural setting to urban setting. about planning our urban setting, from rural setting to urban setting. What does it mean when you say traffic? It means we are now congested in a particular geography. Why can't we expand somewhere to ease the sardine pack like District Four, where Monica has relinquished to Councilor Foster? They are all civil rights advocacy, they call. Ma'am Monica, please wake up. You left your district in traffic problem. We are packed like sardines there, with your neighbor District Nine. You supported Councilor Rivera. These are all connected, because we are the advisors supposed to be. Wake up! This is now the county at a threshold where you could oversee the entirety of the political geography. Or step down.
Thank you. Your time is up. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, then you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning. My name is Becky Rapp, and I appreciate this item as it directly points to the serious concern for road safety in the unincorporated areas of the county. According to data provided in the staff report, underage drinking remains a serious problem in San Diego County. Nearly one in 14 reports drinking alcohol, and more than 6% admits to binge drinking in the past month. Research shows that when adult binge drinking increases by just 5%, underage drinking rises by 12%. What happens in the adult community does have a direct impact on our youth. The DUI trends are just as alarming between 2019 and 2023. DUI crashes involving alcohol increased by more than 22%. Even more troubling, crashes involving underage drivers surged by nearly 66%. With those young drivers found at fault in the majority of cases, these numbers demonstrate that our youth are already at high risk when it comes to substance use and impaired driving. Introducing more marijuana storefronts into the backcountry will only worsen these problems. Increased access, normalized drug use adds to impaired driving on rural roads and further exposes our youth to harmful substances at a time when they're already struggling. According to the data, our county needs stronger prevention and education efforts, not expanded drug availability. I respectfully ask you to consider these trends carefully and to keep marijuana expansion out of our unincorporated communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Gonzalo here. So, this item on Traffic Advisory Committee and Related to CEQA Findings may sound routine, like routine planning, but let's not pretend it's innocent. This too is in lockstep with the United Nations Agenda 21. Piece by piece, they are dipping their hands into every aspect of our lives, reducing speed limits, installing roundabouts, many of them in areas highly prone to fire. These so-called improvements are not designed for safety. They will choke evacuation routes when families most need to get out. They will trap people. They will cost lives. Thanks, Sandeg. Nothing being implemented here is about bettering our lives. It's about control, slowing movement, restricting freedom, redesigning communities to fit the global blueprint, not to serve the people who live here. And yes, I know I sound like a broken record, but maybe that's exactly what people need to hear over and over and over, until it sinks in. Because this isn't theory, it's policy. It's happening, and the cost will be paid in our freedom and safety. Agenda 21 is not some far-off plan. It's being carried out right here, right under your noses, through items like these, quietly tucked away. So I will repeat it again, as long as it takes, this is not about safety, this is not about community, this is about control. Done.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Paula Bowe, thanks for letting me speak since you centered me, or whatever, on the consent agenda. Now, I was, this over, and we're, you know, one of a hundred times, some of these are safety-related actually, so that, to me, that's good. The temporary road closures, A1 at Quarry Road seems to be recurring dumping and illegal vehicular activity. A2 on La Samba Road is due to continuing vehicular vandalism, noise, and drug problems. A4 on the Whitestone Road is apparently due to continuing drug sales and frequent neighborhood retaliation, or whatever that means, which incidents have already been significantly decreased, but there seem to be significant problems remaining. And, you know, it's a, it's kind of a waste of resources to keep calling out the police to enforce this, especially when, you know, their funding is so at risk because of the, the board's manipulations. But anyway, the only one I really disprove of is the traffic signal at Pepper Avenue and Molson Avenue, which I don't think is needed. I mean, the picture showed only one car and not doing much. So yes, A1, A2, A3, we got to maintain safety, but a big no to B2. And thank you, Robert, for speaking up on...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Okay. I, I don't know. I'm still waiting for an answer, and I can't seem to move on. So are you gonna form a committee? You don't have to put me on that committee. I have another person in play, I think his name is NK or something. He could take my place. He understands the problem. I want this resolved. I want you to start listening to the people. Please, I am begging you to stop listening to the stakeholders and listen to the people that are coming in here and voicing their opinion. My issue is election. I don't wanna go down each and one of these paths. I hope you understand that. It destroys me hearing the stuff that is going on that you're just turning a blind eye to.
Okay. Can you please pause this time? Just reminder, we're in Item Nine. This is Traffic Advisory Committee and Related CEQA Findings. There's nothing to do with elections. So you have another opportunity to keep your comments pertinent and on topic, and if not, you will forfeit your time.
Curiosity, I, I'll agree with you, but curiosity, I want an answer to this. You were elected to make this decision, correct? And I asked you about the election process regarding the registration process, which you said you were gonna get back to me, and you never did. So are you hiding the fact that you weren't elected by the people?
Clerk, you can go ahead and end his time. This is regarding Traffic Advisory Committee and Related CEQA Findings. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item. Not seeing any other callers called in.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any comments from any of my colleagues?
I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp, a second by, by Chair Protem Palomagiri. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now resume with non-agenda public comment. Ryan, can you please call the remaining individuals that requested to speak during non-agenda public communication?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We do have 15 total requests to speak on non-agenda public comment. We have six individuals in person and nine requesting to speak by phone. Again, for those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now. We will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium, then you will have two minutes to address the board. And again, friendly reminder, to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Like to invite forward the first three individuals, David Levine, Gerald Flanagan, and Laura Anthony. And please feel free to come forward in any order.
My name is Laura Anthony. I am the president of Zero Waste San Diego. I'm here to urge you to support an increase on the disposal fee rate, which is currently at two cents. We want you to increase it to a dollar, not as a burden, but as an investment in the resilience of our communities. Every year, San Diego County residents send hundreds of thousands of tons of valuable resources to our landfill. This isn't just trash, it's wasted opportunity. When we rely on disposal as a default, we perpetuate a throwaway society that costs us jobs, resources, and our environment. By modestly raising disposal fees, we can create a dedicated fund to support outreach, education, and zero waste programs. These programs empower residents to repair, reuse, compost, and recycle, keeping materials in circulation, reducing our dependence on landfills. We know that the programs work. Fix-it clinics, school-based recycling initiatives, composting pilots that have already diverted thousands of pounds from disposals while building stronger, more connected neighborhoods. This is not about punishment, it's about fairness. Disposal is the most damaging and costly option for our future. The fee should reflect the reality, help fund the alternatives that build resilience, community repair, food recovery, sustainable business practices, and zero waste education. Supervisors, we have a choice. Continue investing in our landfills, or invest in our people, our economy, and our environment. A small increase in our disposal fee today will create long-lasting returns for the county, a cleaner environment, new green jobs, a stronger foundation for generations to come. I respectfully urge you to act boldly and approve this increase so we can move San Diego County away from disposable society and towards a resilient, a resilient zero waste future. I'm for the environment because I'm for my children. Thank you.
Before calling the next speaker, I actually wanted to, I think I can refer to the CIO through Davia. I'm actually pretty interested in better understanding what we are already doing in this regard. The presentation had some interesting points around textiles and like textile recycling, which to my knowledge, we don't have a textile recycling program. I thought that the slide deck was really interesting. So I know we do do a good amount of this, but there's probably a lot we don't do. Would it be feasible to get some sort of short analysis to the board that sort of looks at, takes this as a starting point, looks at like, what do we already recycle, and like, what are some of the gaps in our recycling? Understanding that, you know, finances might be a constraint, but let's just start with sketching out like, what is getting recycled and what's not getting recycled? I was specific, like I said, the textiles was really interesting. I think the fact that only like 85% are ending up in the landfills is pretty awful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We can absolutely do that. We currently do not only what is required under the state law that this fee is associated with, and we can look more closely at whether we wanna pursue, or the board would like to pursue additional fees in that regard. Those are tied very much to this very baseline program at the state level, so we'd have to look at proportionality and nexus there. But in terms of what we're doing, we do go far above and beyond the state program, particularly in terms of organic waste, reducing household toxic, toxic waste, and yard trimming waste, that type of thing. But you're absolutely right, I'm not aware of anything we're doing in the textile space, and we'd be happy to prepare a memo on that.
Not, I mean, I think, yeah, schematically, like, what are we doing? And also, I think asking the question is, of course, much of the waste recycling is run city by city, so we're really talking about that incorporated. But is there some kind of program that would be countywide that could fill in the gaps that the cities have?
Chair Lawson Reamer, we'd be happy to look at that, in terms of what the gaps are across the region.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name is Gerald Flanagan, and I'm an evangelist, and I'm of District Five, North County, Gopher Canyon. I'm here to oppose the continuing billboard blight happening in San Diego County. My wife has submitted a photo, a lot of photos showing the blight and installed in tiny village of Fallbrook incompatible huge billboards installed at businesses by Lamar Billboards and Outback. Now she is being told her request to speak in person that she signed up to do online. San Diego Planning and Public Works are selling permits to billboard companies to create another ugly Los Angeles. Please stop this real estate economic decadence. We are not Las Vegas. We have gorgeous mountain views. We don't want obstructed by visual blight pollution. Why weren't these installations brought before the community sponsor groups? Bonzall in Fallbrook, this is serious, this nondisclosure, which destroys our region. And I thank you on the board and everyone that is connected with this forum to permit the public to speak and address things that they're concerned about. And I know God would have you to be blessed, so I call a blessing on you today, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And sir, if we could get your information, I'll have my staff reach out to you. Hello? Sir, if we could get your information, if you could hand it to the clerk, your phone number or email, and I'll have my staff get in touch with you here in District Five. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is David Levine, and I'm a deputy public defender in San Diego County, and Chair Lawson Reamer from District Three is my supervisor. During negotiations this past spring for our current contract, supervisors became aware of something that every public defender in this county has already known. There is a serious disparity in promotions between our office and the District Attorney's Office. In particular, there's a bottleneck between Deputy Public Defenders Three and Deputy Public Defender Fours. The county gave us, in writing, a formal acknowledgement of this gross disparity and a commitment to work with us to fix it. Not only that, the Board of Supervisors directed the county to begin working with us alongside our management and county financial representatives to develop a plan over the next contract cycle to resolve it. We're already beginning to see movement. Our office just opened applications for promotions from Level Three to Level Four. Management has signaled it would like to promote a long list of attorneys, many of whom are topped out. That means that they only receive cost of living raises until they reach Level Four. But without the budget that you will allow, these promotions cannot happen at the scale needed to close that gap. That is why we are here today, to ask the board to provide our office with the budget authority to promote as many Level Threes as possible. That is how we can remedy the bottleneck, address the disparity with the DA's office, and make good on the commitment that the county and this board already made to create true parity between the Public Defender's Office and the District Attorney's Office. Please, stop measuring parity in promises, measure it in people. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the next three speakers forward, Jimmy Rodriguez, Ron Asklin, and Cesar Javier. I'll call the next three speakers forward: Jimmy Rodriguez, Ron Asklin, and Caesar Javier. Feel free to come forward in any order.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Jimmy Rodriguez, and I am a deputy public defender here in downtown San Diego. Mr. Anderson is my supervisor. I've wanted to be a criminal defense attorney since I was seven years old, and part of the reason for that is because of the dignity and respect that we show people at the lowest points in their life. Some of that respect and dignity can come as simply as just listening to people when no one else will, or celebrating a moment of sobriety with their clients. And I'm here today to ask for some of that same dignity and respect for my office and for my colleagues. Half of our office is stuck at a Level 3 journeyman position in our office, and nearly all of those same people are in Tier C or Tier D of the pension plan here in San Diego. That combination creates circumstances in which people that have wanted to do this work just like I do are looking to other places to get that dignity and respect elsewhere. And as a supervisor in my office, I'm responsible for assigning cases to people that are overworked, underpaid, and undervalued. Unfortunately, that takes a toll on morale, and that trickles down to the clients that we serve. I'm here today to ask for parity for our office, for parity to be treated as equals, not anymore, but as equals, with the opponents that we go up against every day, that being the district attorney's office. I'm asking you to measure parity not in promises, but in people and in action. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I am Dr. Ronald Asklin. I'm the conservation chair of the San Diego Sierra Club. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to provide non-agenda public comment today. Today, I'm representing a coalition of over a dozen organizations led by Sierra Club San Diego and Zero Waste San Diego, and we're urging the County Board of Supervisors to adopt a countywide waste and toxic materials reduction program. Next slide. This program would encourage waste and toxic materials reduction, disseminate information on health and environmental effects of toxic substances, and support recycling, compost, and durable goods recovery. The basic idea, next slide, please, is that we would increase the county's solid waste planning fee from two cents a ton to a dollar and two cents a ton, which would generate approximately $3.4 million annually. This similar program has been very effective in Alameda, San Mateo, and Santa Clara Counties. The idea is this program would complement the great works already being done by the county with the other 18 municipalities. What can we do as kind of a holistic approach to make sure we address these concerns? Wanted to highlight a couple of things. One is pollution of our rivers, bays, and shorelines. If you look at all the trash that shows up on our beaches and bays and rivers, this proposal could really help with that. I think you've all seen pictures of the Chiana River filled up with plastic and used appliances and all kinds of stuff. The second thing is by diverting these materials from landfills will reduce the need for more landfills in the future. So, it's really a win-win for the county, and I think it's a great opportunity to collaborate with our other municipalities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Caesar? And then I'll call the final--
Sorry, can I ask just a question of our presenter? You're here from the Sierra Club. I know you're here from the Sierra Club. What are the other members of this coalition that have been most active on this matter?
Well, it's certainly been Zero Waste San Diego has been the next most active. The Solana Center, let's see. SC 350, well, I mean, it's been a pretty good, it's been a pretty good coalition. But I would say clearly it's been Solana Center, Sierra Club, and Zero Waste San Diego have been the top three.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to continuing this conversation. I think this is really extremely interesting.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'll call the final remaining in-person speakers, Perita Javier, and then Anthony Richard, or Richard Anthony, my apologies.
Point of clarity, can we be together because this is 41 years' story?
You are the final three remaining speakers, so yourself, and then Perita Javier, then Richard Anthony.
Can I go backward just to be with her?
You can't yield time, but you can have your time, and then she can, and Perita can have her time. But you, the board's rules are very clear about yielding time.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm learning.
I'm going to go ahead and start your timer.
I am speaking visually, sir. Look at me, citizen Reamer. You are governing board of the Air Pollution Control District. Mr. Anderson, fellow citizen, you declare that you cannot help me because you are only after your territory. I haven't approached, sir, this one. I approached many, 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 many times the political virus of the city of San Diego about this pollution issue in our community. Solution: air purifier. Says, sir, don't tell it to everybody or to everyone, just for you. Problem solved, no mom. Is that your intellectual quality, capability? You deceive us. Step down if you cannot do your job. Simple as that. Forty-one years, this hazardous business is in a residential zone. You declared to me, ma'am, oh, land use and planning California, oh, it's not a specific law. But I tell you, the general provision says no program, no project should be there if it is not in accord with health, safety, and public welfare. You're wrong. If you cannot do your job well, step down. There are so many people who would like to help and defend our constitution. I voted for you. I bring my wife, let's vote for Monica. Civil rights advocate, advocacy, sorry for my English pronunciation.
Perita, if you'd like to speak, you still are able to speak. Perita's still able to speak. I'm sorry, Richard.
Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Richard Anthony. I live in Pacific Beach, and my life is garbage. But I'm in recovery now, and we're working very hard. I came to, I've been working in this since 1970. I came to San Diego in 87. The goal was to site a new landfill. At that time, Susan Golding said, reduce the waste stream by 30% and do it in three years. And we did. We did it in 50%. And the way we did it was we raised the wasting fee, and we used the money to give all the cities that used our landfills trucks and bins. And we were going really well until Susan went to be a mayor, and Bill Bay went to Congress, and Donald retired, and it went on. The new board came in, and they were very conservative, where the state said that on these mandates will give you the right to charge a fee for implementation and education. Alameda County charged $8 and built a major education program. Our conservative board looked at two cents. What we're looking, what we're asking you now, we've been to Sandag, but the board wouldn't give them any money to do it, so they didn't want to do it. So, we're going here to the Board of Supervisors. We want you to increase the 939 fee, a dollar, it'll get us 3.5 million. We will be able now to have educational grants, and we'll be able to do other kinds of programs that allow people. You know, we spent a lot of money on the capitalization of collection equipment, materials recovery facilities, and when it came down to public education, it wasn't there. And that's the real thing now. We need some boots on the ground to help talk to the people in this county, all over the county, about why they have to separate their organics and why they have to recycle their materials. And what we're finding is that we're probably in the lead in the country. San Diego County and its cities, about 60% recovery, but there's still another 20% to 30% of the material that is still going to landfill.
Thank you, sir.
Did I hear, I'm sorry. Am I done?
You're done. Thank you, sir. Okay, it's your turn, Perita.
I am now the caregiver of my wife with the IHS of the county.
Hello. Since 1984, the hazardous business has thrived and remained unstoppable. City, county, AOPA, Sacramento, APCD, originally, formerly with the LUEG County, including Center of Disease Control, CDC, and lately, FBI could only say, sorry, we cannot help you. Office of Congressman Vargas, David Alvarez, sorry, we cannot stop the business. Nine counselors, city attorneys, and the mayor. Core city of the region, five county supervisor, then with supervisor Vargas, heard it, story of poison caused gas emission, but done nothing to ensure justice, domestic tranquility, and public welfare to our community. We lost hope when Mayor McCain lost his bid for district.
Thank you. Your time is up. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, it's when it's your turn to speak. You'll be unmuted. You'll hear recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle. I came to share with you a wonderful presentation that has been provided to several of our northern county planning groups and several of our northern cities, most recently the Vista City Council. It's from San Diego State University's Policy Research Center for Tobacco and the Environment. These folks at San Diego State University are funded by the state of California to do this sort of research to prevent, reduce, eliminate, and seek solutions to tobacco's toxic legacy of environmental pollution and contamination and harms to human health through exposure caused by decades of commercial tobacco sales and use. Their goal is to provide to us some solutions, some policy solutions, and I thought you would find them interesting because I know you too care about your citizens being able to live and play in smoke-free and vape-free environments. As the presentation points out, that regardless of a resident's financial or living situation, they should all be able to benefit equally from clean air and clean environment, and we know that hasn't been the case in South Bay. And the solution is the adoption of two possible policies. One is to adopt smoke-free and vape-free policies for housing, particularly multi-unit housing, and for public places, similarly to what we have at our beaches and our parks. And number two, to make smoking and vaping products less appealing and available. You do have a tobacco retail licensure that reflects this opportunity, this policy opportunity, but there's other things that can be done as well. We think those of us who have attended these presentations--
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Ryan, figure it out. Hello. Here today as an intern for the Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation. I'm echoing the support of strengthening our countywide waste and toxic materials reduction programs by raising these funds. San Diego needs a proactive countywide approach to reduce toxic waste and really all waste fragments, improve education, expand access to safe disposal. And right now, our residents face barriers disposing materials in our systems. The systems themselves are fragmented. SURF strives to protect our coastal environmental land, and our current system needs strengthening to support and protect these places. This puts-- Right now, waste sits in our communities and it enters our waterways. This program aligns with zero waste principles, prioritizing reduction and reuse overdisposal, and it helps address disparities in communities that have carried the burden of pollution problems for a very long time. We urge you to support an increase in fees for the region to access cleaner, safer, and more equitable futures. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to a closed session public comment. Ryan, please call anyone who's requested to speak on closed session matters.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Item 10 on today's land use legislative session agenda are closed session matters. The closed session agenda includes nine matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on closed session matters must provide comments related to the matters listed on closed session items. Otherwise, your comments will be considered off-topic. We do have five total requests to speak, two individuals in person, three requesting to speak by phone. Again, for any individuals that have requested to speak on closed session matters by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. Like to invite forward Caesar Javier and Allegedly Audra. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
So, there should be Evelyn, too.
Evelyn knows well, yes. So, we have three in-person speakers. Thank you.
Okay. Technically, only two. Caesar just left. Yeah, so, again, anything that county council is doing when they are engaged in fraud and adding it to reports and court record, they're lying. They are engaging in, you know, conspiracies with others, I'm sorry, conspiring with others to do this. Jessica Feldman, she's Jessica Nicole Feldman, is accounting counsel for this case. She's also trying to work with Nicole McCon to force vaccinate Zaya Robinson, and then that will lead to Malaika. Right now, she's up to date, which is unfortunate. But the things that you guys continue to do are engaging in crimes. You're engaging in civil rights violations, due process, so many things, and you're not telling your staff, and that's a problem. And it's a problem when you're going to be doing anything for the board here, when you're going to be making decisions and about litigation, and when you're not truthful to them about what's going on. It is very egregious, and so you guys are setting yourself up as personally liable for the things that you're engaging in, because you refuse to do anything, except for Monica, right? You pretend, but that's not what we're asking for. You need to course correct, because you guys are seriously kidnapping children. That's what's taking place. And you're holding them for ransom. And no matter what parents do, it will never be good enough. It doesn't matter, because the goalpost always keeps getting pushed back. And when you guys continue to do this, you're personally liable for kidnapping children. So, if you really cared, you would stop doing it. But you obviously don't, so you're going to be held accountable for it.
It's your turn, yes. It's your turn, yes.
Good morning, Board of Supervillains. My name's Evelyn. I'm going to back that up. I need my children back that you guys-- Yeah, Monica, I'm looking at you-- that you guys kidnapped for me, all right? And please stop sending out your staff if you guys are not really going to help, all right? Because you know what? You know what? She just texted me, and I'm talking about Mariah right now, all right? She just, she just texted me and said, "Oh, I'll get back to you." She never got back to me, actually. Never got back to me until, until she said, "Oh, there's nothing we can do." So you know what? Stop sending out your staff if you're not going to help at all, actually, okay? So, and yeah, you guys need to, like, really talk to your guys' staff because they're not doing jack shit. They're trash, basically. Not, not basically, that's what they are. My children don't need to be vaccinated, all right? They don't. They're not, they're not sick, okay? And actually, my two-year-old right now, actually, has a 500, over 500-page medical record, all right? And they're not even in my care. When they were in my care, guess how many pages they had? Zero. Zero, all right? You guys are monsters. You guys need to go to prison because you know what? Stop trafficking kids, all right? Stop trafficking my kids. And you know what? I was a product of a trafficked kid, believe it or not. I am. But you know what? My kids are not next. You guys are going to hell. F you.
Thank you. Monica, why'd you do that? Did you seriously send--
All right. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. We'll begin with our first caller.
Hello, many thanks for putting the case summary into a file we can edit. Makes it a lot easier to work with. I would appreciate the short summary of the cases, but you're probably working on that too, like you work on everything else. I see that you have a big conference, and I'm glad you moved it to Wednesday to free up more time for discussion on Thursday, and hopefully more time for closed session on Wednesday. I really appreciate these changes, and I hope you make them permanent. Case A, Sandoval died of meth overdose at Estes Central Jail after medical staff left him unmonitored for eight hours despite signs that he was under the influence and failed to call paramedics when they discovered him having a seizure. Been around for at least six years despite clear fact. I suggest you settle now to avoid more damages and risk that reputation dragged into the gutter. Case B, performance canceled because of portrayed actors of different races. Sounds kind of petty. Should have performed as a mulatto, half-black and half-white. You are a pretty full schedule, but I do hope you'll settle the 150 or so cases related to the Polinsky Center abuses. How much will continually putting these off for discussion cost us in money and risk of not having the book heavily thrown at you guys and their reputation? I really hope the screams of abused minors don't get so loud that tourists will, with kids, will stay at arm's length in the car.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Paul just mentioned regarding Polinsky, and it's who knows how many cases. It's way beyond 150. I'm positive of that. It should be, at least. I mean, just so sad how, you know, it's so sad that the public and the people that fund government have no clue what is going on. Just passing by a street corner, people are protesting over ice and, you know, distraction, 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 bullshit distractions, all the design, and here our children are like, you know, our children are being affected, they're being taken away from loving homes, people who are clearly fighting to have their children back. It's obvious. It's just a sick, twisted system, and something's got to give, and it will. It can only go on for so long, and I've said this before, that people are waking up, and I just, I don't pray often, but I-- But I pray for the kids, man. I really do, and it's really fucked up that, that little girl, I'm sorry, I don't know which one is up to date on her vaccines. You can get her detoxed, okay, babe? So it's not the end of the world. She can be detoxed. It's so sad what they are doing and how they are using our babies, from freaking technology to those supposed wellness visits. I mean, gosh, it's just really unfortunate, and it just, it angers me, and it sucks that week after week, you know, we come in to try to hold you guys accountable when nobody knows what's going on, and you guys continue to--
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
I'm going to try to keep decorum. So I'll reference what I said yesterday, but I was completely and utterly wrong. Monica, you are not, you don't act like that. I was wrong. You are actually the slave trader. I mean, here is a perfect example of that. You don't think we exist. You don't think the people could even handle their own kids. She said, she did all the things that she needed to do to get her kids back. What they said was, "I don't believe you." So what is her options, none? You guys have the choice to go ahead and go ahead and do something.
Can you please indicate which item on the closed session agenda you're speaking to? Go ahead.
Explain the whole thing on the closed session agenda, then. What is happening in this closed agenda so that I can talk about it? Because I'm the only one that you want to go ahead and stop talking right now. Why? Because you might be in major trouble.
It's posted online?
So please, tell me what is on--
Do you want me to read?
I tried looking for it, and I couldn't see anything. And I don't have anyone to call, so you're going to tell me right now.
Mute him. Go ahead and read the closed session items.
All right. So all nine closed session items. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Ronny Sandoval at all versus County of San Diego. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Annette Hubel versus Miguel Acosta. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Sweet Water Authority versus San Diego County Sanitation District. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Stephanie Foster versus County of San Diego. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Purdue Pharma. United States Bankruptcy Court. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding national prescription opioid litigation. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And conference with labor negotiators for the Deputy Sheriff's Association, Supervising Probation Officers, Probation Officers Association, District Attorney and Investigators Association.
Okay. Thank you. Please indicate which item or items you're speaking to.
Is there any additional comments that is on those lists? I want to know all the details before I make a comment. And I don't have an avenue to go ahead and look that information up, and I don't have anyone that I could call to find out that information from the county. So could you please read all of it?
We just read all the items. You can go ahead and start--
No, I understand you read the items. I want to know the attachments. Any, was there any attachments to any of that stuff? Did anyone write any comments? Did anyone say anything?
No.
Okay. So which one exactly are we talking about right here?
That's what I'm asking you. If you cannot identify which item you're speaking--
No, 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 no. I'm asking, so exactly, so go over that again because I didn't quite get that.
Thank you.
Wait--
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on closed session matters.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now proceed to closed session. This meeting is adjourned.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 10 on today's session agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today, and the next regular meeting of the board will take place on September 9.[1781.45][1781.45][music]